All right. Let's go ahead and start our city council tonight. As you can see, we're virtual tonight. Trying to follow the governor's mandate. Keep everybody safe. So. Uh, let's go ahead and get started. Like to welcome everyone that's on. And just a quick reminder, if you are joining us, please mute your. Your camera or your, your audio until you're called on to speak for the public there. So. All right, I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to give us a prayer.
Dear my father, we're grateful to be gathered today. We're grateful for the opportunity to. Listen and take care of the city's interests. We ask that thy blessing be upon. This great city and the citizens within it, that the spirit will be with us tonight as we deliberate and discuss issues that affect our daily lives. Please watch over and protect. Those that, that are here, that are dealing one way or another with the current conditions, the current pandemic, please bless and watch over them. And let them know that we care and love for them. Please watch over and protect. Those that are far away from us, that are protecting our freedoms and, and the enjoyment of life that we have here within the city. We ask for these blessings and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I've asked Councilman Beck to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please stand and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual.
We may have lost the mayor while he tried to rotate his camera. Probably pulled it off of his. Probably pulled it off of his docking station. He's trying to point his camera at the flag. Maybe Mayor Pro Tem Mike Mendenhall, if you want to continue forward. We'll get him back.
I can do that. You might want to mask up and. Get up there and help him.
Tyler's on his way.
All right, perfect. Um, let's see, the, uh. The next item on the agenda is number four, public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council and mayor? Uh, there he is. There's the real mayor back right now. Mayor, I just invited public comment in the public comment section if anybody's here. Looks like he's froze again. Is anybody from the public here that would like to address the mayor and council? If not, we can move on to Spanish Fork 101 and the shop local program.
Want to do council comments first?
I guess we'll go there. Council comments, uh, yes, uh, council comments first. Uh, Councilman Gordon, let's go to you first.
Thank you, Councilman Mendenhall. Um. At a Mount Nebo water meeting yesterday, the lion's share of the meeting was discussing water banking. Um, if you don't understand what water banking does, it helps facilitate. Um, the purchaser, if you have someone that. Um, needs water and someone that has, is selling water, you, uh, a water banking system would help facilitate that process and somewhat eliminate. Um, the need to go out and find somebody, the bank wouldn't, would know who has water shares that are available to sell. So we continue to look at that as, as the Mount Nebo Water Agency to see if that's something that we want to participate in. Um. Wanted to report on the Kiwanis. Um, Kiwanis did a road cleanup project as from Revere Health to I-15. Appreciate them. Uh, as well as honoring 66 high school seniors, um, for their service. And so just appreciate Kiwanis and Rotary. And those clubs that do great things in our city. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention was my appreciation for those who. Um, come to the farmer's market and purchase. Uh. Food that is grown locally and those that, uh, that work so hard to make sure that we are able to have a farmer's market. It obviously means a lot to me and my family. And so as that has come to a close for the year, we, uh, we just want to say thank you. Uh, from on behalf of our family as well as, uh. Um, as a councilman, just really appreciate everyone that, that puts so much effort into that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the little glitch. I went away for a while, but I'm back. So, Councilman Gordon, were you the first one? Okay. How about the council member back?
Thanks, Mayor. I do not have anything tonight.
All right. How about Councilman Scopes?
Uh, Mayor, the only thing to report is just a sort of a vote of gratitude to the different veterans organizations we have in our community. Each year they. They go to the different elementary schools, junior highs, high schools, uh, give a presentation on Veterans Day. I talk about what Veterans Day means, um, the. Uh, the armistice that was signed, uh, November 11th, um, this year because of COVID, this is probably first year in. Boy, uh, decades, I would say that members of the DFW and the American Legion, uh, here in our great community have not had the opportunity to be able to go and visit with the school kids. I know talking with some of those, those veterans, um, they, they wish they could, but certainly understand, uh, understand why. And so just wanted to be able to take in, take advantage since. Our last council meeting, we had, uh, the elections and didn't have a chance to meet, uh, you know, then, but just appreciate the veterans, uh, in our community. Uh, their service and the opportunities that they, that they take to be able to teach, uh, teach the young kids about, about Veterans Day and about the freedoms we enjoy. So. Uh, they couldn't go out this year, as I mentioned, but, uh, we do appreciate them every year they go and, uh, the service that they still render to our community. That's all, Mayor.
Great. Councilor Nargel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of updates from the, the airport board. Um, the ramp, Bravo, uh, is completed. Um, they had to close down the runway, you know, for a couple of days so that they can complete that. Now they're working forward to extending that. Um. And then they're, uh, also working on, uh. Oh, now I'm like completely blank with the land swap. Chris, what's the name of that company?
San Miguel.
San Miguel. Thank you. Sorry. They're working on that, which will be a great benefit to us and will allow us to extend that, uh, Bravo runway down along. Um, there was a couple of things that, so they would like to improve their camera system, which, uh. Uh, shows the planes that are landing and taking off because they land, um, of course, the city, the airport has paid for that. And they miss some of those planes and Chris thinks it's quite a bit. And then they also want to, uh, and they probably maybe talked a little bit about this, but they need to improve their availability. To get jet fuel because they're having some of these planes that are coming in and want to land in Spanish Fork and they end up landing in Provo. For fear that they can't get their, uh, uh, jet refueled in a timely manner. So that's a couple of issues that are working on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, reiterate what Brandon said about the farmer's market. Uh, no one in the chamber or in the, uh, in the farmer's world. Would have guessed that they would be operating during a pandemic. Um, just kudos to them, uh, for, for moving. Uh, you know, moving where they needed to as far as, um, you know, different regulations and guidelines to, to keep people safe. Uh, just not a, not an easy thing, but, um. But cool to see groups of people, uh, just to, just try to do their best. And keep everybody safe, but also keep the local farmers, uh, you know, going and, 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 uh, be social with, you know, while we're being distant, one with another. Um, I, I think just as successful as, as it could have been, uh, this year for a farmer's market. Kudos to the chamber. Kudos to those farmers. Um, the shop local program. I'm excited for the 101 that's coming up next. Speaks a lot of the, the chamber and the city. And the mayor's involvement in, um, in, in having something like this come to fruition. So I'm excited for that 101 and. If for the community, uh, for businesses to learn more about that and, and be involved in it's, um, I think it's, uh, again, making. Making what could, uh, you know, what's the best out of a tough situation, again, with a pandemic and, and try to keep as many dollars locally for. Uh, our businesses to operate, thrive and employ people and, and keep it going. So, um, I'm excited for that. Please, if you're on this call, on this, uh, web meeting. Uh, make sure you listen to the, to the next thing coming up with Spanish Fork 101. Um, uh, had a good opportunity with a couple of other council members to go up to Diamond Fork Junior High. Again, this last week and speak to Mr. Evans' class and Mr. Chandler's class. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Chandler mentioned it. To his students that if they needed, uh, some, some, some extra credits, some makeup work that, uh, they could hop on. Uh, this meeting tonight virtually and, and, uh, listen to us discuss the, uh, the details and the, the issues of the city at hand. So. If any of those kids are, are here or watching, uh, on Facebook or YouTube, uh, welcome. Uh, thanks for. For listening to us speak for a, a few minutes and hopefully you got something out of it. Um, I certainly did by the good questions that were asked and the good dialogue going back and forth. Um, our kids are in good hands with teachers like Mr. Chandler, Mr. Evans, and I know hundreds of others. Everybody but Mr. Scopes is doing good in the education department of our kids. Just kidding, Mr. Scopes, you're doing great as well. Excited to give you that. Um. So that was a good time. Last thing, uh, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, we've had a board meeting, um, that, uh, that convened yesterday. Um, we've been involved in more than a few meetings with the league. I, I sent this to Nick. He's sharing the screen here, but this is the new ulct.org website. This hadn't been updated, I think, since the internet was invented. If you'd ever been online to the league's website and seen what it was before. So quite a big undertaking, uh, that, uh, that came about, um, with, uh, with the league's revamping of the website. Better access, better information for people that need to go there for, uh, for a number of things. But the coolest thing, of course, that I told Nick to, to make sure to show. Uh, was that, uh, that a picture of, uh, our beautiful area is, uh, is, is on the rotation of great places in the state. Um, many accuse me of being a Spanish Fork homer and I'm fine with that as I know many of us are, but it's this beautiful shot of the Icelandic monument. Uh, up on the east side of town, I thought was very fitting to, uh, to make sure to point out to our, our residents, um, but also to the state as a whole. Um, we could spend the next nine and a half hours of Mayor Lefson talking to us about the Icelandic history of. Of Spanish Fork and, and this monuments and, uh, and whatnot. Uh, but, uh, but in one way or another, all of our families might, might dial back to. To, uh, the heritage of, of the Icelanders that come here. The, the neat thing that I didn't know until a few years ago about, uh. About the Icelandic heritage here, um, was that when they first came here from a, a faraway land, they, uh, they were the poor people from. From across the pond and, um, they were told to kind of go other places rather than. Rather than the downtown settlement of, of Spanish Fork. So they ended up on the east side. They ended up out in the west fields in different places. Uh, because they were, they were kind of poorer than the, uh, than the Welsh and the English that were here. And so. I, I think it's really cool that that's one of the cool things that people point to in Spanish Fork now is the heritage of the, uh. The toughness, the, the grit that, uh, that are the Icelanders. And so I thought that was cool that, um. That the league chose that photo to be part of what represents Spanish Fork because that's what we should represent to the state is we are tough. People, we're gritty people. Um, but, uh, we're also, we're also, I think, more inclusive than, than, than maybe other places too, that we understand. Um, that people belong everywhere in our city, uh, regardless of their economic circumstance or, or anything. So. The Icelandic monument means that to me and I'm, I'm proud that that's on the league's website. So I thought I'd send that to, to Nick so he could share it with us tonight. And that's part of my council comments. So. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
A nice job on the photo, you know, and, uh, anybody wants to know more about the Icelandic heritage, just give me a call and we'll sit down and talk for a few hours. Well, that's great. All right. Did we, uh, did we have public comment while I was gone? Okay, perfect. Sorry, I was off for a little while.
No one raised their, I don't know if you want to ask again. There's been a few people joined since then, but no one raised their hand while I asked.
Okay. And I'll do that. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on. Let's go to Spanish Fork 101, shop local program.
Thanks, Mayor. So tomorrow at 1:30, Mayor Seth, Dave and I will, uh, be going live on Facebook and YouTube and Channel 17. To describe and, and to show what the shop local program is. So I can't let all this sink. I've got to save something for tomorrow. Um, and Pete's been, been meeting with some of our businesses and has some great videos that we'll be able to show. Uh, that explain the program in, in another way. Um, but for tonight, we want to just give you a kind of an overview of what our shop local program is, as you. Uh, maybe heard it mentioned or a few of the businesses in town have, uh. Have posted some things that encouraged residents to, to spend their, their vouchers. So we wanted to let you know what that program is all about. Next week, residents, every resident in the city will receive, this is about the size of it. It's a postcard sized. Uh, mailer that has three breakout vouchers that are valid at participating businesses in Spanish Fork. Well, this allows the resident to, to take these cards and use them as cash. And the businesses that have signed up to participate, that list will be on our website. Uh, that webpage will go live tomorrow. And so we'll share that, that with you during our Facebook Live. Uh, but this, this money is from the CARES Act from the federal government. It's a chance to, for the holiday season, give a gift to each of the residents, uh, that have had, you know, trying times with. Everything going on the last few months and to encourage spending in Spanish Fork and to also help the businesses that have. Uh, particularly those that have struggled, uh, throughout this pandemic to get money into their hands. So. The resident will take these cards to a business, use it as cash to make their purchase. And then we have an, an easy streamlined process where the business brings us the cards and we just, and we cut them a check. So that they have, you know, cash in hand as, as soon as possible and they're able to, uh, go about their business. So. Um, we're excited for this program. Some other cities in the county have done a similar program. And the best parts of what they've done and created our own and. Are excited to share more tomorrow and get this program, uh, going come Monday, Tuesday, when they hit mailboxes. So anything that he wants to and Seth, he wants to chime in and then we'll see the rest of you tomorrow at 1:30 and, uh, share some more with you.
You know how many businesses end up signing up?
We're getting closer to 300 at this point.
And it can, yeah, it comes down every day.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. Um, also on our, uh, 101, we've got annual moderate income housing report.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to try to share my screen with everybody. Struggling with that a little bit. Maybe I'm struggling a lot. There we go. Can everybody see moderate income housing there?
Yep.
Good. Great. Utah code requires us as a city to report annually on. Moderate income housing, the plan that we have to create more moderate income housing and the current status. Of moderate income housing in the community. The report has been completed by Brandon Snyder in our office and that is attached to the agenda. Tonight, I think I just want to let that speak for itself largely. I do want to touch on some of the strategies that we are employing as a community. To enhance the availability of moderate income housing in Spanish Fork. Uh, state law provides a number of options, some 20 different. Uh, different strategies that cities can select from. We're required to select three of those and the three that we're using. Um, are not entirely different from what we've done in the past. First of all. The efforts that we undertake to increase the availability of land for high density development, which in our case would be. Utilizing the R4 and R5 zoning districts. Um, we continue to take steps to, to plan for. Those developments in different areas of the community. And that is one of the strategies that we've employed. Uh, to again, help increase the availability of moderate income housing in the community. Also, you're aware that this past year. We further relaxed restrictions. On accessory dwelling units. The, the main way that that was done was the allowance of that particular type of housing. In detached structures in different residential zoning districts. We think that's a very significant step to have taken. To have allowed for, uh, distinct type of housing that currently wasn't allowed in the community that indeed would help. To satisfy our requirement and the need for moderate income housing in Spanish Fork. And lastly, uh, this is something that is becoming more and more timely as we look to the future of having commuter rail. Come through Spanish Fork with a stop and the type of housing that, uh, we anticipate seeing develop around that particular, uh, part of the community. That's often referred to as a transit oriented development. Planning for that type of development in proximity to that stop. Is something that we continue to do and that indeed is one of the strategies that's recommended in the state law that communities employ to help plan for. Moderate income housing. So those are the three strategies that the report, um, contains. Just in the interest of being respectful of your time, I won't go into more details relative to the report. Um, this conversation here does indeed satisfy, uh, with the filing of that report with the appropriate state office, the requirement that we have. Uh, to do so in 2020. We'd be back again in 2021, likely to, uh, have a similar conversation, but certainly offline. Uh, for me, the council members or anybody on staff, if you'd like to do a deeper dive relative to the report, which is attached to the agenda. Either Brandon in our office or I'd be happy to sit down to go through things, uh, relative to that document. So that being said, um, just to talk really quickly about a couple of other things related to moderate income housing and kind of the state of housing in Spanish Fork. Um, this description, uh, is offered simply to, to provide some context relative to what moderate income housing is. So. The latest information that we have from the census identifies the median household income in Spanish Fork at just under $75,000. Now, moderate income housing is defined. With that formula that we've listed there below. As housing. That someone, a household that is, that earns 80%. Of the area median income. So that would be roughly $75,000 times 80%. Uh, for roughly $60,000. So that really is the target for moderate income housing, households that make $60,000. I, that amount then is, uh, multiplied by 30% with the. The widely accepted idea that households that spend 30% or more of their income on housing are overburdened. Relative to, uh. The expense that they afford for housing. Um, in our case then, uh, that means basically that. Any type of housing, it could be owner occupied where somebody's paying a mortgage or renter occupied where somebody's simply making a lease payment. Uh, in any event where, where those payments are at $1,500 a month or less, those housing units indeed qualify towards. Um, what's considered to be moderate income housing. Anybody have any questions about that? Great. So just a few other things quickly. I, the council sees this with some regularity throughout the year. Um, this chart just shows how we've grown over the years, going back to the mid 90s. Um, with, uh, the representation for growth in 2020 there, uh, to the far right side of the chart. Um, that's through 10 months of the year. So we still have a couple of months to go and we'd anticipate that. Um, 2020 will be a strong year for growth again, uh, probably right around our highest years, but for that, that spike that we had back in 2006. The gray part of the bar represents single family homes, the red part of the bar, multifamily. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um. I'm trying to make this somewhat germane to some of the conversations that we've had this past year about. The type of growth that residents in the community see and maybe some concerns that that raises with them relative to. The composition of growth, whether it's single family homes or townhomes and the like. Um, again, you can see from that bar that still the, the predominant building permit that we issue. For new housing is indeed for single family homes. Uh, incidentally, uh, 75, that's a number that means a couple of different things for us in Spanish Fork. First of all, and it's really just coincidence that these things match up at 75 or 75% actually. Um, and you'd certainly expect there to be a correlation between these two, but, uh, not necessarily to this level of precision. 75% of the homes in Spanish Fork are owner occupied. 25% are renter occupied. That's a little bit unique to have that predominance of owner occupied homes in a community. Uh, personally. In my professional opinion, I think that speaks very well of a community where there's that much opportunity for people to. Um, really climb the social ladder and to accumulate wealth in a way that, um, in our country. I think people can only enjoy with homeownership or it certainly gets, it's much more difficult to do if you don't own your own home. So. Again, 75% of the homes are, are owner occupied and likewise 75% of the homes in Spanish Fork happen to be single family. Uh, homes on individual lots. Um. Now, just to try to illustrate how our growth pattern has changed over the years a little bit, and this mimics something that the council saw earlier this year. We'll spend a lot of time on it, but I think it's important for just purposes of, of context to understand how we measure up. With other communities in Utah County. So once again, a great part of the chart shows how our growth has, uh, occurred. Relative to single family homes being constructed, the red multifamily, um, Spanish Fork and Utah County being the two comparisons. So you can see how back in 2015, that particular year, um. I, we certainly were not consistent with the county as a whole in terms of, of that composition of. Single family to multifamily homes in terms of building permits that were issued. And I'll point this out, incidentally, um, certainly. I, there's, there's good reason to think that multifamily development. Uh, different types, whether it's apartments or townhomes, uh. duplexes, whatever that case might be. Certainly, that type of construction is not always low-income, moderate income or the like. In fact, the vast majority of that type of development that's happened in Spanish Fork over time has simply been market rate. And I think largely what we see constructed today, contemporary construction of multi-family structures would not likely in any way, shape or form qualify even as moderate income housing, much less low-income. But at the same time, it's probably the most affordable type of new housing that's being added to housing stock in both Spanish Fork and and surrounding communities. Therefore, for this discussion, I think it's, it's, it's certainly worth paying attention to just what that composition is. To see how that changed a little bit from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. A pretty significant jump up. We went from about eleven percent multi-family to thirty-two percent from fifteen to sixteen, but still our composition of multi-family was well behind the rest of the county. We got a little bit closer in two thousand and seventeen to matching the county-wide growth trend. Once again, a little bit closer in two thousand and eighteen, then we had an anomaly in two thousand and nineteen where we were kind of back to where we were in two thousand and fifteen. And I think this really illustrates kind of the strength of the trend throughout the state of Utah as well as Utah County. Where just even according to an article that was in the Salt Lake Tribune over the weekend, we're starting to see along the Wasatch Front more multi-family construction than single-family homes. So the market pressures that lead that to occur in other communities are certainly present in Spanish Fork. And even with that, because of zoning regulations and just the community's overall approach to growth, that that shift to multi-family construction has largely been muted in Spanish Fork. Moving on, two thousand and twenty, this is where we stand today. Frankly, this is not where I thought we would be a year ago. I really anticipated us being, you know, more in sync with kind of the the two thousand and fifteen Utah County pie chart there to where it was much closer to fifty-fifty. We're still not there. It's more like one-third to two-thirds. But yet moving forward, we would expect probably in the next few years to be much closer to the composition that we see in Utah County today. And once again, all along the Wasatch Front. In my view, that that simply is due to the current state of the economy. The demand for new housing in particular. And for us, just simply the the land that's been available in recent years for projects to get approved and and to move forward into construction. That being said, I'm gonna wrap up here fairly quick, but you can see from this map, which already is a little bit dated, we need to add a few developments to this. Just where developments been occurring in Spanish Fork, certainly we've been one of the high-growth communities in in Utah County in recent years. That's not going to change anytime soon. A couple of other things relative to just once again, current housing inventory and some things that we'll likely see change in future years, which certainly will, I think, impact the availability of housing at different price points. So this is a snapshot that was taken just a couple of months ago. Focusing on townhomes because that's something that's fairly easy for us to identify as a particular type of multi-family housing with approximately twelve thousand, sorry, I should say eleven thousand distinct households in Spanish Fork. About twelve hundred of those were townhomes, so just a little bit over ten percent. Just a couple of months ago, that number hasn't changed significantly since then. So we could say about eleven percent of our current housing opportunities in Spanish Fork are townhomes. And this map and the related numbers illustrate what is in the pipeline. So twelve hundred existing, over five hundred in the works. Most of these projects are currently under construction. So indeed, we'll see potentially a fifty percent roughly increase in new townhomes that are built in the next few years relative to what exists currently in Spanish Fork in two thousand and twenty. So I think this indeed is what sometimes people in the community see and take note of when they have questions about the state of growth in Spanish Fork and how things are changing. I think sometimes that brings up questions about land use policy and those types of things. Incidentally, the different projects that we see on this map almost entirely have been part of of plans that have been in place for well over ten years. In fact, much of this would go back beyond that in anticipation of having multi-family development at some of these locations. So certainly not reflective of changes of of policy that have happened in recent years, but much more reflective simply, I think, of changes in the market and the demand for certain types of housing. I kind of likewise building upon that. So this is both townhome projects that are in the pipeline as well as a couple of others, a condominium project and an apartment project, a thousand homes in the works as we look at it from this perspective. So again, back to the idea that moving forward, we probably will see closer to a fifty-fifty break between multi-family and single-family construction of new homes in Spanish Fork. That indeed, as much as as reasonably possible, should help once again, like I said, to provide opportunities for housing of people that may indeed be closer to that moderate income level relative to household income. But every one of these projects is market rate and the market will determine what what the that actual housing cost is. That's all that I have relative to that report. This isn't the most exciting thing that we get to talk about on an annual basis, but at the same time, it certainly, I think, is one of the the more pressing topics, more pressing concerns that communities all along the Wasatch Front are dealing with. This impacts, I think, all of us as Utahns in different ways, whether it's how economic development will unfold in the future or just how we live and how our families live. The need for additional housing units, I think, is clearly going to continue to be strong. Not going out on any limbs by saying that, obviously. And pressure for us as a community in Spanish Fork to deal with the demand for housing and the pressures that come, I think legislatively and otherwise, if anything, will likely increase in future years. And I think that's probably one of the things that this opportunity to talk about this modern income housing report helps with. If any of you as elected officials have any other thoughts or ideas relative to strategies that we should look at to help increase the supply of housing that we have for all persons in the community, we'd love to talk about that. But Mr. Mayor, that's our report. Like I said, I'd be happy to discuss it further offline or now if anybody'd like to.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate the report. That, that's an eye-opener.
Mayor, if I can quickly add, I think this goes hand in hand with today Envision Utah released their Valley Visioning documents online. So if any of our residents want to hop online, it's utahvalleyvisioning.org. And it just goes over the last couple of years of studies that they've pulled together from residents, mayors, council throughout Utah County. We've all heard the statistics where the valley is expected to double by twenty fifty and increase by one million residents by twenty sixty-five. So it just kind of, at least they have a plan and I think this will be a good tool for elected officials throughout the valley making policy and moving forward with this type of housing.
Great. Thank you. All right, let's move on to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
I got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go down to public hearing. Ordinance Z fourteen dash twenty, changing the zoning designation and annexing the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Hurst Zone Change.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You may recall that within the last couple of months, a general plan amendment was reviewed for the subject property here, which is located just south of Canyon Road, not far from Somerset Village. Somerset Village being just kind of off of this image here to the north of the subject property that's identified here in yellow. This is about a four and a half acre site. The general plan amendment would allow for the proposed zone change, which would change the zoning from rural residential to R1-6. This property is a little bit unique. It has some unique topography to it. It's a little bit isolated from surrounding developments. And in short, the planning commission reviewed the zone change along with a proposed preliminary plat in their meeting just a few weeks ago. The planning commission for standard subdivisions is the land use authority. So they actually took action and approved the subdivision that's identified on the image that we have there on the screen. That is an R1-6 subdivision. It's well-conformed in the minimum requirements for subdivisions in the R1-6 zone. But that approval is contingent upon the city council now approving a zone change, like I said, from rural residential to R1-6, which is consistent with the general plan and is consistent as well with the planning commission's recommendation to approve that that zone change.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by who? Is that Councilmember? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in public hearing. If there's anyone out there in the virtual space that'd like to talk to us about this subdivision, please unmute and state your name and your comment. Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Public hearing.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number Z fourteen dash twenty, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Hurst Zone Change.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Second, Councilman Mendenhall.
A second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Member Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
That passes. All right, let's move to ordinance eighteen dash twenty, amending the Spanish Fork municipal code relating to aggregate transportation, storage and recreation overlay regulations.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm not going to use any visuals on this. The proposal's relatively straightforward. I believe most of you on the council and the mayor will recall that about a year ago, this particular zoning option was created as a tool that conceivably would allow Sunrock to close their operation on Arrowhead Trail and relocate it to property that's north of the airport. One of the things that we did with the creation of that zoning district was to try to limit the properties that would qualify for that particular use throughout the community. And one of the approaches that we took in that effort was to have a minimum property size of forty acres. The proposal tonight simply would change that forty-acre minimum property size requirement to thirty-six. That indeed is the result of us now understanding more clearly exactly how much land Sunrock has to work with on the north end of the community. And I acknowledge that it's fairly rare for us and and most communities to craft language that really is is this closely tailored for one particular operation. That indeed is the reality, though, of what we're trying to do. And out of that desire to accommodate Sunrock's effort to to move that facility staff, that is, the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both have recommended that that proposed change from the minimum project size or maybe I should say property size requirement from forty acres to thirty-six acres be approved.
Okay, since this is also a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
I think for the record, that's been Councilman Scopes, but he's not wanting to identify himself, so.
He seconded it?
Well, I cannot identify myself more. I
He's been making the motions, but he's not telling anybody, so.
So he made the motion? He, he made the motion? Okay, so let's go this way, so it's because it's hard because someone's left that plot plan up there from Hurst subdivision, so I don't see their big smiley faces to tell. So someone will take that off the screen, that would help. And two, when you make a motion, state your name and then make the motion. That way we can know that what we're looking at here. All right, so we are in public hearing. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and the council on this, would you please unmute, state your name and give us your comment? Okay, seeing none. I would still like to get that Hurst subdivision page off my screen. Someone would do that. I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Mike Mendenhall.
Got a motion by Councilman Menden, or Councilman Beck and a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now the public hearing. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
Mayor, Councilman Scopes. I move to approve ordinance number eighteen dash twenty, amending the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to the aggregate and transportation storage and
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes. Second Chad. A second by Councilman Argal. This also will be a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Let's go down to new business, Ryan Jack's fence height approval request.
I'm not sure that I want everybody to see my screen again, but can you see that image of the the block of Hurst North Main Street?
Yes.
Good, great. So our ordinance simply requires anyone that would like to construct a fence that's taller than six feet. Okay, great. So our ordinance simply requires anyone that would like to construct a fence that's taller than six feet to have the city council's approval. And in this case, the the new property owner of the property right here, Mr. Jex would like to construct a fourteen foot tall masonry wall right here to enclose that property. So that is the proposal. It is to construct a fourteen foot tall wall right here to enclose the property. I believe he is here tonight. If you have questions for him as to, you know, what you'd like to do with that, but in short, staff, we think the the wall as proposed would be appropriate, given the adjacent use of the property, the lumberyard, and don't have any concerns with the council approving this request.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there a reason for fourteen foot thunderbolt or concrete wall?
Yes, the the main reason for it is is that it just deters access along that along that little strip that the city sold to us. We we bought that with the intention of putting that wall up there. I think it was it was known prior to, you know, us purchasing it that we wanted to do that. But it just, it makes it, I think would be, it would just make it nice because the same height as the building on both sides are about that same height. So it would just be, I think it would just be a nice addition. It wouldn't, it would, I don't think it would deter or distract or detract from any kind of sight, from anybody seeing anything or doing anything. It'd just make it kind of fit into that back end.
More secure for us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Or comments? I think that personally, I think that would blend right in with with the business you've got right there now and secure that, make that a enclosed facility that will look nice. Okay. Any other questions, any comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, maybe one, sorry, one last quick question on my part. Is it just, Mr. Jex, is it just on that that section of property? Let me try to describe it here. That is in between what is identified here as fifty east and forty five east and to the west, if you will. Maybe Dave with your mouse, you could try to guess where I'm pointing. Yeah. Is it just on that end, or are you also proposing to do any fence that is on the maybe on the eastern side of that fifty east building? Yeah, it not not necessarily there, but maybe running more east west.
No, there there wouldn't be anything that would go all the way along. It would just be enclosing that part and then just over to the property now owned by Ogden's. Just come over and and come onto that back corner. I don't know.
Yeah, right where your mouse is.
Right where your mouse is.
We wouldn't do anything between the old holster store and what is considered our door shop. We just leave the fence that was there. There.
There.
Because there's kind of a double fence. He's put one up midway through his property. And then there's the original fence that's been there forever, and we don't have any. We're not worried about, it's nice and open. You can see what's going on. There's lights there. We can kind of, we feel secure with the two fences that are there. The only thing we don't feel secure about is is that big dark alleyway that's just in between buildings.
It it seems to be a collection of garbage, and I'm sure that the police have made some visits to that property back behind our back wall and the other, just makes, it would just make that so that it would be not accessible.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. I'd still entertain a motion on that.
This is Chad, motion to approve the Ryan Jex fence height construction of fourteen foot tall masonry wall as described in building permit application.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, we're gonna skip item B because it's not ready. We'll go down to C, resolution twenty dash twenty, adopting wastewater treatment plant master plan.
Okay, we are working really hard on building a new treatment plant that will meet the regulations for Utah Lake with all of the algae balloons and 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 things. The state has increased regulations for for treatment plants, as well as our treatment plant is nearing capacity, so we are going to expand and and the capacity of our treatment plant. To do this, we have to make a really good detailed plan of how a treatment plant, how our treatment plant will run, some of the redundancy that will be in it, the the anticipated nutrient levels that will be treated and and all of those things. And that has to be passed through the state. And then they have to have it approved by resolution by the city council. And so that's what this is. This is those plans and pass this and we send that into the state, they accept that, and then they'll approve to go forward with the design. Basically, it's to build an MBR plant. This is the same plant that Provo is building. It's a filtration system, which is pretty much the top tested and true process that is out there for treatment plants. It's what's called future proof in that it can treat the sewage to a much higher level than is required now, so that as future regulations come, as they always seem to do, we we won't be caught in a situation where our our treatment plant can't perform to those regulations. It's also very expandable as as city, as the city grows. And we're really actually pretty excited about this this plan.
Any questions for Chris about this? I think they've spent a lot of time on that. Stacy, I know you've read all one hundred and thirty pages of that study. So if there's no questions or comments on this, I would entertain a motion.
Since I wrote, read all the that homework Chris gave us, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty four, adopting a wastewater treatment plant master plan.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Second.
A second by Councilman Gordon. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mendenhall.
Councilmember Mendenhall, oh, there he is, Mike.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you. All right, resolution twenty twenty five indicating intent to annex property known as the Swift Creek Annexation.
Mayor and council, this this Swift Creek Annexation is a part of an existing island of unincorporated area in the county. And there is a process that whereby we can do it through a resolution and ordinance to finalize the the annexation rather than doing the petition process. So this resolution tonight is to declare the council's intent to to annex this part of this existing island. And the the reason for that is that there was one or more municipal type services provided over the past year. And that was fire and EMS services, and that there's fewer than eight hundred residents in the annexation area. Then, once the resolution is adopted, the staff will have to do noticing and schedule a public hearing with the city council, and after the public hearing is held, the council can adopt an ordinance to finalize the annexation. Any questions on that?
All right, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion. Motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty five indicating intent to annex property known as the Swift Creek Annexation. Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second, Mayor. Councilman, Councilman Scopes.
A second by Councilman Scopes. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, resolution twenty twenty six, emergency declaration termination of COVID nineteen.
Mayor, you probably remember back in the beginning of April, you issued an emergency declaration in in response to COVID nineteen. A little bit earlier tonight in our work session, our city attorney, Von Pecel, mentioned state executive order twenty twenty dash seventy three, which addresses some instructions to our Utah residents on what they should do during the pandemic. So this this resolution would terminate your emergency declaration. And the reason for that would be because the federal and state governments have implemented some restrictions and issued orders regarding COVID nineteen. So there's no longer a need for the local declaration. So this would, this would terminate that local that local emergency declaration, and we would continue to follow what we already have to follow with federal and state mandates.
Any questions for Tyler? About this? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Terminate me. My motion, maybe.
Mayor, Councilman Scopes, I move that we that we approve resolution twenty twenty six, emergency declaration termination.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes.
Second, Chad.
Second by Councilman Argal. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall. Nowhere to be found, but that that passes with majority vote.
Mayor, Mayor. Councilman Mendenhall is having a hard time with his connection. He and I are texting. He just texted me and I, if you will, accept that.
I'll accept that.
But he's just having a hard time. His his laptop's giving him some bits right now.
Tell him to quit lending it to Jagger.
I will tell him.
All right, let's go to Westland Construction Library contract.
Sorry, Mayor, this is Jared. I had to turn off my, or turn on my mic. The contract you have before you is for the library and administration building with Westland Construction. This is only for phase one. It's the full contract, but what we're moving forward with is the demolition of the building and the site work. We will still bring before you the guaranteed maximum price before we move forward with the actual construction of the library. But we do need to get moving forward with the demolition and the site work, so we're looking for your approval to move forward with that. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Jared, will you also touch on the demolition work and what we got as far as maybe some of the some of the numbers or details?
The demolition work, the total work that we're proposing to move forward with is three hundred and sixty one thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars. This is not the full fee that Weston would charge if they are actually to do the library, but this this is the only part we're moving forward with, so.
Was that, was that better than estimated?
It's it was actually within five thousand dollars, but it's actually over by five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Steph, I did receive a call from them.
I'm sorry?
I did receive a call from them, the demolition.
Was it to actually do the demo work or just to haul and hide it?
Just to haul it off.
You know, that ravine in front of your house is actually railroad tracks. I don't think you can put stuff in there.
Maybe sometime.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Westland Construction Inc. library contract for demo.
This is Chad, a motion to approve the Weston Construction Library contract.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal. The second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
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 I get all the ayes. Glad to have you back, Mike. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency.
Mayor, so moved, Councilman Scopes.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes. A second by by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
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 We are now in RDA. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent items.
Motion for the
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
A second by Councilman Member Beck. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, proposal for counseling service to assist in preparation of new community reinvestment areas.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is effectively two different proposals to provide planning, budget and legal services to help us prepare what may be as many as three different new community reinvestment areas. In the past, it's been customary for Spanish Fork City via the RDA to utilize this type of outside expertise. When we embark on these types of projects, there is some hope that we will enjoy some economy of scale, so to speak, and maybe being able to do the heavy lifting for three different areas at once. And I think that's reflected accurately in the dollar values of the the proposals that have been given by Bonneville Research and Smith Hartvixen. And that's really all there is to it.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion approved.
I move we approve the proposal for consultant services as out
I move we approve the proposal for consultant services as outlined by Dave Anderson.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall.
Second, Brandon.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to reconvene back into city council meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any discussion, Seth? Apparently not. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved, Councilman Gordon.
Second, Councilman Mendenhall.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, we're, we'll move into closed session, thanking everyone that was here participating and watching our city council. Thank you. We will now go into closed session.